Good morning, welcome to the September work session for the Mayor Board and Alderman for City of Fayetteville. I'll ask Alderman Bryant to say a prayer and then we'll get into our agenda.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you this day to come back and do the city's business. Thank you God for all your blessings. Thank you Lord for the community we live in. Thank you God for the support we have from all different areas of our community. Lord, we just pray that whatever we do here today would be in your will and we not do anything just for our own selves. God, we just thank you for this food's been made available this morning. Pray God you continue with us and bless our community as we go forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We'll get into the beginning of our agenda. A little review of the work session minutes we have with you. Does anybody have any adjustments or corrections from the previous? Those are stand. We'll go into requested reports. Scott, anyone talk about silent reflection walk on September 22nd?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Sheila Rico has organized this walk and she is requested to come before the Board of Mayor and Alderman and they'll talk on it for about five minutes just to let everybody know what it's about and what to expect.
I think that'd be a good idea. Anybody have any issues? Alright, we'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday night. We'll also have a swearing in badge ceremony for our new fire chief Baldwin.
We'd just like to put this on the agenda sir, to do the badge and swearing in.
Sure. I think anybody has a problem with that, we'll put that on the agenda. Also you have a swearing in patrolman Kyler Gentry.
Yes sir, same thing, just taking his oath of office.
Alright, well have those three things on the agenda. Department reports. Public Works, Mr. Plunkett.
We need all the help we need. We had some scheduled for interviews here, two showed up.
Wow.
We talked to them the day before and set a timer and they never showed up.
How many positions you guys opening right now?
Three. One by workers comp. Stump above going through the department down there. They're four years old, five now. So, we're just doing the best way we can do it.
You catching up since the holiday?
We probably will be caught up in brush this week.
Okay.
We're trying, but it probably won't happen.
Anything else? Alright, thank you. We'll go to police. Jake Brakes, we spoke about this last month and we put it back into the Police and Fire Committee, so who would like, Mr. Collins, you'd like to speak to this?
Yes sir, the committee agreed to move it to the full board and in your packet you have a copy of the MTA recommendation on and information on Jake Brake ordinance and if the board so chooses, we can ask our city attorney to put it in city available format for ordinance consideration.
Comments?
Yeah, I think I will comment on this. This has been, we've been, this has come before us for three or four months now, probably. I would kinda like to know what our feelings is about this before going on with ordinances and all that. I mean, if there's not enough support on the board to really do anything with this, I wouldn't see any reason going any further. If there's enough support on the board, just to go ahead with it, then go ahead with it.
I don't think it should go any further, I would say.
I'm not in support of it.
Well, I have brought this before the board several times because I have been approached by the public. It's a noise, a nuisance, especially for the people who live close around the bypass. Mulberry Avenue is, you know, it's very distracting for them. A lot of these are in early morning hours. It's truckers coming into town at a higher rate of speed than what's posted and they're using these brakes to make the turns and slow their vehicles down. So, you know, I keep listening to the public and we do have a problem with all these eighteen wheelers coming through town. We don't want to stop the trucks from coming through but take the correct route and it's, you know, less destruction for our city. They've run over curbs, they've ran over signs, they, you know, it's just a proper way to do things and I just think this is an ordinance that our city needs.
Alderman G. this?
I'd like to see it move forward so we can do a final vote.
Okay, we have one other member not here, so I think I want to agree that I think we should just go forward so the whole board has the ability to vote on it, so we'll just take it to a vote. Next is a permit for the Lincoln County High School homecoming parade. Chief Howell?
Yes sir, 9/20/19 Lincoln High School Homecoming Parade will be held from Lincoln High School to the square. It's an annual event.
And it's been an annual events and kind of a tradition for them. Does anybody have any issue moving this forward? Next is Trail of Tears Motorcycle Ride, Chief Howell?
9/21 Trail of Tears Motorcycle Ride will be coming from Chattanooga through Fayetteville. I spoke with the committee in my belief on this because small number of motorcycle riders, this time it's to the west catching traffic, they should have bought by all traffic laws.
Okay. And then, if there's no anybody having any objection, we'll move that forward. It's an annual thing, very important from a historical perspective. Hosted Christmas past, another standard.
Yes sir.
Same thing, closing interior of the square.
Yes sir.
Doesn't close any other roads around the, I don't think does?
Around the square and occasionally on the home views on Sundays, we may close one or it may be in the county. I'm not sure where it's gonna be this year.
Okay. Well, the home tour I don't think is part of it this year.
I do know my commander was talking, they'd had a meeting about some changes on that Sunday, but I'm not up to date on those yet.
Yeah, my understanding was the sorority that did that was not doing it, but if he might have, doesn't have any objections, we'll take this forward and vote. Fire Department, budget amendment, five sets of turnout gear for $16,000. We spoke about this in finance yesterday. Chief Baldwin, would you like to talk on this for a minute?
Just briefly, since you've already spoke about it. Basically, in the 1920 budget, it was budgeted for 14 sets of turnout gear at $3,200, I believe at 44.8. We have 19 full-time employees. We have made an offer for the open position and it's been accepted. That person will have to also be fitted, which it wasn't factored in. I don't personally have a set, that wasn't factored in, so we've let some people out. Did go back yesterday, or the day before yesterday, our meeting and look, there is no set of turnout gear in our station that is newer than 2011. So, that puts us about a year and a half out of the 10-year mark and most of it looks really rough and it's been worn, I mean through training and everything, yes, it's really in rough shape. So, you're gonna have to stay in PAA data on it, ten years, and I would feel like we need those extra sets to cover everybody. That still leaves our reserves out and I understand that, you know, it's a process. We can, you know, as much as our reserves work, there's some of that gear that might be able to pass down and hold them off for a couple of years until we can probably fit them in a year.
So, speaking about you and the other hire, does that change the 16K?
No, that is, that is included.
Okay, okay.
I'm requesting a total of 19,600 budget for it.
Sure. And my memory, I was not on the board in '11, but my memory serves it, the last time turnout gear was purchased, it was a donation from a private citizen and during that time, so we, the committee felt that being a safety issue, we wanted to bring to the board, but I think it is endorsed by the Finance Committee to take this budget amendment.
Yeah, we did. We felt like it. This is a safety issue. I've never known this board not to step up when it's, anything that was a safety issue.
I feel the same way. I think we need to take care of it.
Agreed.
Alright, we'll move this, we'll move this forward. Chief Baldwin, you have anything else in your?
The only thing I'd like to add is just a personal note, and I kinda add these, maybe they're appropriate or not, but Captain Jeff Smart has attended T-Back as Tennessee Fire Code Academy's Fire Officer One and Two Course and just passed his written examination last week for Fire Unit One, so he is moving forward on that certification process. He's gonna break them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Parks and Rec, 2020 TAP application, Greenway Phase Three, Mr. Collins?
Yes sir, y'all have a copy of the sample resolution. This would be Phase Three that was denied funding twice now. If the board so chooses, this would be our third attempt to get funding. One of the reasons we were denied funding in the most recent cycle, we have an active one under construction right now and then Phase Two is scheduled to go to bed hopefully by the end of the month, so we've got a lot of their money already invested in this, but we were encouraged to apply for the Phase Three.
This did come out of Finance and we did endorse going forward on applying for this. Comments? Alright, we'll move it forwards. While we're on Parks and Rec, Mr. Collins, we speak on the progress on Greenway Phase One.
Yes sir, they have already made a pour on the upper end of South Elk and now they're working on the brick section where all the brick has been removed and then it will be graded and sand based and similar to that, and when they put all the brick back, it'll be ADA compliant. And then once, that'd be a little bit labor intensive, time consuming, but once they get through with it, it'll pick up quite a bit and then the new construction will start going down the hill towards Sequoia Concrete. The bridge pillars are already being prepared to be put in, they have the track hole on site, so it's, it's moving forward at a good rate.
That's good, good. Oh, those bricks, do they think it's gonna be enough of those bricks to put back in to build that, so those bricks broke up off the bay?
Yes sir, the reason being, the sidewalk section in front of the chamber, once the concrete was busted up, there was a brick laying around it, so they took all that brick up.
That's part of those busted up brick?
Well, I saw them stacking them the other day, so they were trying to save what they's, yeah, they could.
That's correct.
Mr. Mitchell, you have anything else from Rec Department this month?
Yes sir, Mayor, we have a lot of things coming up for week four, all days will be in eight next week, but like everybody with us, we've been shorthanded, we still haven't got the main supervisor position filled for the process of lab and we're down the home trust dealing outside, so we're just doing the best we can and number pick for that.
Close the pool up the other day for the, for the season till next year?
Yes sir, the pool is closed this year.
Okay, you probably have a report on the, maybe on the concession sales and all that with these?
I would have that with me, but I will next week.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might remind everybody, if don't mind, since we're, this has been filmed and all, they're not gonna be able to hear you if you don't pick that microphone up music, probably, it's a...
Yes sir.
That's a continual complaint we get. You don't use that microphone, nobody's gonna hear you.
That's right. We'll go to Planning Codes, 2019 Multimodal Access Grant, Mr. Collins?
Yes sir, as reported last month, we did put in a pre-application for the multimodal access grant and what this grant would entail would be to replace the sidewalks on the south, west, and north side of the square and it is a 95.5 match, which is projected to be a million dollar project, but the city's investment would be 50,000.
I think that's wonderful, that's a big thing.
We put in this twice before?
Yes sir.
Yeah, well, it's still worth going after. The sidewalks we talked about in Finance are really torn up pretty well and this has been something we've been trying, I think we need to keep going forward, so we'll put this on the agenda for Tuesday night. Industrial Park Streetlights, Mr. Plunkett?
Yes sir Mayor, we've got a plaque come from the plant utility board yesterday to supervise property in the unit apart, it'll be the last building, new building that they got built. On their plaque, they did not show streetlights. I did not sign off on that, on account of the situation. I don't guide us from this board whether you want streetlights in there, them to install the streetlights or live the way it has is in the city, but on their dollar, later on.
Is there any discussion with industrial boards about that?
Not on this section, on the previous session, section, the new road that sit there now, there has been, they said we need the streetlights, we can put them in and we got prices from FPU, overhead is 25,000, 400 dollars, underground is 54,000, 300. So, how is this board gonna handle it?
We had, in our committee, we had talked about streetlights a couple of times, but I think we'd only talked about them up to where?
Colosac.
Colosac.
Were they passed on DANS, no?
Yeah, and we didn't really have any reason to move it on at that time, till now, till this is all coming up, which, we didn't discuss this in our committee because we didn't know about this.
Come in after, we got the email, I got the email, or opened the email after our committee meeting.
But the thoughts, I believe, if I can remember, our thoughts was, we, if we were gonna, it is a city street, I mean, it's a city street, like any other street. I mean, that's what it is. That street, we determined that we had took that street over what a few years ago, Eddie.
Yes sir.
We, there was some questions about that. I remembered us taking it, we looked into it, that is a city street. I think our talk at the time was that we felt like the overhead lights was reasonable. We felt like the underground, put all the wire underground was not reasonable, because if you go around town everywhere, it's overhead wiring. I think if we was gonna do it, I think it's a city street, I think it needs to be done, I really do. Who does it is, I guess that's up to whoever decides, but if we're gonna do it as a city, I would, I would want us to look at the above-ground wiring.
What was the difference Eddie, was it about double for underground?
Well, you know, if somebody wanted, if they didn't like it, somebody after it didn't like it because it's above-ground, they pay the difference. If they wanted underground, somebody can. But I would, I would say as a city, if we're gonna move in that direction, that we would do like we do. Eddie, about all of them above-ground, I...
So, I don't want subdivision where it's all underground?
Yeah, but I bet a contractor paid for that though, more likely, the subdivision. So, you know, I'd say if we're gonna do it, we should probably consider doing it above-ground wiring. And if that doesn't suit the industrial board, it doesn't suit the factors or whatever, if they wanna pay the difference, then we could go underground.
Well, I think considering this just came up, you know, since in between committees and this, I think we don't need to act on it this month, I think we need to...
Well, we've got two scenarios here. Existing park weekend, but what I'm asking you, on this subdivision, they're willing to close on, the way I understand, towards the end of the month, they gotta have our signature on it before they can close on this property, on this last building. So, do you want me to sign it and us assume the light building, put those lights in, do you want me to have it put on this plaque? If they can put it in, the industrial board will put the lighting in on that section.
Has it ever been written that they had to do the lighting?
It's there or it's our subdivision.
Is there a chance that the industrial board would pay the difference and go underground? Because, I mean, at some point you may have to go back and go underground anyway and kinda be up to date when we put it in. I mean, is there a chance that the board might split that with us?
I don't, I don't know how they did that.
Well, the odds of them paying anything to put in a light again in the old part that we've been talking about is slim, but the new coming up, it would have to be discussions with the industrial board to see, because we don't know about that part of it.
We've got, we've got in our subdivision regulations, it'd be there.
So, the 24, if we did, that would just cover the first part of it? That's not including all of it?
No, it goes to the end of asphalt now.
Okay, so then when they did this, if they did the subdivision, we agree on it and then they put the lights in that next part?
That's, that's what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
They're wanting to subdivide this property.
Uh-huh.
If they subdivide, we approve this plaque, which I've got a copy of right here right now. We approve this plaque. We're waiting, we're just telling them they don't have to put the streetlights in.
Okay. Would it be normal for the city to take on that responsibility or is this something that's an exception?
Subdivision's that, put their own in.
Okay.
Well, maybe we should go with that route on the new part, if that's what the regulations are, and then us take care of the old part.
I agree.
You know, that's...
That's where I won't forget, where, you know...
I mean, if you've got subdivision regulations, it requires them to do the, someone to do the lighting other than us, I think that's where we're at on the new part, but then I also think that we should step up and take care of the old part too, you know? But I don't think we should take care of it by going underground, the old part, because I don't, I don't know that anybody out there is gonna do the old part if we don't do it, since no agreements has already been done on none of that that I know of, so I guess you kinda got your answer you want from what it sounds like on the, where we at right now?
So, maybe ahead with the requirements?
New area.
It, that's fine, I'm good with either way, I just want, you know, whatever this board wants to do, what I don't, my next up out there. Maybe we've got another utility before it goes to the plant commission, so I'd contact the surveyor and have him put spot them under, I told him yesterday I would meet him out there and show him who we wanted the lights at the intersection.
So, you're absolutely sure that in the subdividing on what they're doing, even though it is industry, that it is their responsibility according to our regulations?
We have the regulations right here.
To do the lighting. Hey, that's, it is what it is.
I agree.
In my opinion, it's, but we do need to come back and deal with the other part, we've not brought back before the boards yet. We need to run that old part back through our committee and bring it back to the board and on the old part.
That's awesome.
Can they, can they even, yeah, they could put lighting in down there, either way, cause electricity be down there, yeah.
You got the answer you want?
Yes sir.
Alright. Anything else on their planning codes, Ms. Gentry?
Yes sir Mayor, I wanted to give a brief update for the whole board for the branding initiative and the downtown master plan projects. Chandler Thanks will be back for their second visit, September the 16th, which is a Monday, and they will meet with their ECD team at noon that day and then the Board of Mayor and Alderman at four that day will be sending out an email with all this information and then at six that evening, they will meet with the stakeholders that they did the one-on-one interviews with to do their revealing to them. During that visit, they will focus on the brand profile wheel, the brand sensory assessment, the brand truth, and the platform and strategy. And we also will include in y'all's email, they sent a graph of a timeline for the rest of the project. It looks like they'll finish up around Christmas, but they may wait till after the new year to do the final presentation, just with the chaos of the holidays. For the downtown master plan, they will be back September 30th or October the 3rd for a charrette. The first evening, which is on a Monday evening, we're gonna have a planning workshop down at the museum. We'll have, broke out into teams, eight to 10 people will be around a table, have a base map of the study area and get to actually do some planning and throw out ideas and issues and opportunities. They will take these maps over the next couple of days and then draft a concept plan and at the end of the fourth day, we'll have a public meeting where they'll present the draft that they, that they did during the charrette. But we'll be sending out all that information, their emails, and then getting it out on the website and Facebook pages.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Roselle?
Pre-audit work has begun and should be hearing from the state any day now on the 2019 title. That's really all we got rolling, non-stop.
Okay. Administration, Mr. Collins?
Mayor, I've got a couple of things and then I'll have more Tuesday, but so to avoid being repetitious, I just want to state that the state insurance plan, the memorandum of understanding, that will be signed and will go into our second year under the state health insurance, which was binding to begin with, but just for your information.
With no rate change, right to the same as year before?
And also, I'd like to ask our HR Director, Adrian Gage, to please step up to the podium here. We have, the state has mandated through TDOT that all municipalities across the state must do an ADA transition plan to make sure all city properties, including sidewalks, everything, is ADA compliant. It's a process, but I'll let Adrian explain a little more.
And we brought it, thank you Mayor, we brought it forward to Finance and I'm not sure which other committees, two or three months ago, to kinda give a brief overview of it, but like Mr. Collins said, it will be a transition plan to bring all current sidewalks, et cetera, up to ADA compliant for the city. It's a new state mandatory thing. Requests were made for a statement of qualifications and one was submitted by Community Development Partners and we'd like to bring forward a resolution to hire them to complete the process by the end of December, if the board so chooses.
What's gonna be the timeline on us getting all this done? How many years?
We have to initiate the plan now.
They'll put an estimated time in there based on our current budget and we can change that, Mr. Bryant, depending on however the board chooses and they'll just put, like I said, an estimated timeline of comparison from other cities and the other things that they've worked with to give us a guideline to go by.
What is, does the state have a deadline?
It's just a reasonable amount of time is all that they, they have set forth.
It'll be like a five to 10-year project overall.
So, it's a long-range plan?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
With no deadline?
Not the fake, reported at this time.
That's correct.
And how's the funding work on that? Once you come up with this plan, is that on us or is the state?
It'll depend just on what has to be done and if we would have to work with like FPU for an example, or the library, and we just may have to work that out with the board however they so choose to reach out for funding for different places. And there may be some grants and stuff involved further down the year, we'll just have to look into all that.
And we're somewhat ahead of the curve because the Public Works Department has been rehabbing sidewalks throughout the past few years and they did make them ADA compliant when they did it. So, we're, it's not as bad as it sounds and it'll just be a systematic plan that we have to address.
So, this is also the buildings, right? This is everything?
Everything.
Everything, so if we have any buildings not up to code, we gotta take care of that?
They have to look at anything that a citizen may have access, public access to.
Like the library or?
Yes sir.
Unfortunately, again, we've been proactive, you know, we installed ADA entrance.
Library did too.
And the library.
Courthouse did it, yeah.
Adrian, is that citywide for all sidewalks or is it just the downtown hub area?
It's gonna be citywide.
Anything in the city limits?
Yes ma'am. Any, any access that the public has to sidewalks.
Sounds like a major.
Yes ma'am, it is.
Well, I mean, it's not as we can say no, I mean, we have to do it. We're taking the war, I mean, and need to, I mean, we don't wanna lighten the fact, the importance of it. I do wanna thank Ernie Quals from 911 because I remember he supplied some data to the company
Yes sir.
From the GIS, from the city limits. From the G I S, um, from the city limits, that sidewalks and their lines and some imagery, some other stuff to help them do this transitional plan. So, I wanna give him credit and thanks for that, so. All right, we'll put this on the agenda.
Is there anything, um, Adrian, that the merchants will need to know or need to do? I know a lot of them do not allow public restrooms. They just don't have the facilities. But is there anything that the merchants will have to do to their stores or anything? Is that fall under this?
No, ma'am.
Or just city property?
Just city property.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I will be happy to give a more detailed email or memo or whatever you'd like for some more detailed work from community development partners, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Please. One other thing on the other, I was gonna ask Alder Martinez, just on the library board, if there's any update on the search process for the new library director?
We've, um, started taking applications for a library director. Um, have to have a bachelor's degree. And we're gonna kinda take it slow with a lot of guidance, you know, to find the right fit for the position.
I assume they have to have the library sciences degree?
I don't know if they're gonna push that so much as looking for someone that has a lot of business knowledge or whatever, because a lot of the director's position was, you know, QuickBooks and knowing the business end of it. So, they were looking for somebody that had a great personality, that could speak to the public-
Handle the budget.
And handle the budget and stuff like that.
Well, I tell you, if you make it to, to master's degree, you're not gonna have much to pay.
Well, we had discussed that for the pay. The master's degree would probably eliminate, so we dropped it down to a bachelor's degree.
Funding, funding's not there to get, to get up.
And even the staff is already underpaid as it is.
That's right. With a pay situation, it's the library, it's, uh, gonna be difficult to get a director with a whole bunch of degrees that-
Right.
Really knows what they're doing, you know, and so. But there's people out there that knows how to do it without all those degrees. Some of them might know better than ones that got the degrees, so, good luck. Just hope you come up with a good one.
Any other, Alder, have any other things that you can bring up before? If not, we will adjourn this, and we'll meet Tuesday night for our regular September board meeting. Have a good day.